Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the City of Thousand Oaks City Council and Redevelopment Agency Reorganization Meeting for Tuesday, December 7th, 2010. Just a reminder, at the conclusion of this evening's reorganization meeting, the council welcomes everyone, present, guests, citizens, et cetera, to the annual reorganization reception. It's going to be out in the lobby, right outside the doors of the chamber. At this time, we'll call the meeting to order. Would you all please stand and join me in a pledge of allegiance? Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Bill De La Peña, present. Councilmember Irwin, here. Councilmember Glancy, here. Mayor Pro Tim Fox, he's here somewhere. Mayor Gillette, here.
Thank you. At this time, because this is a unique meeting, the annual process of reorganizing the governance structure for the city council, I'd like to acknowledge former mayors, council members who are present this evening, and when I call your name, if you would please stand and be recognized, it would be greatly appreciated. Mr. Frank Schello and his wife Marion. Frank, I'm sure, there you are. Mr. Ray Garcia, Ray. Judy Lazar, Judy, there somewhere. Bob Wilson. Oh, didn't make it, okay. Larry Horner and his wife Betty, good evening, folks. And newly-elected board member of the Caneo Recreation and Park District, former city council member, former mayor, and former county supervisor, Ed Jones, Ed. And now, Bob Lewis, Bob. We have a number of other elected officials and dignitaries who are present, and I'm going to try to go through this list, and then I'll do the apology if I miss anyone. So, from the Caneo Recreation and Park District, Susan Holt and her husband Ed. Not yet, okay. Outgoing CRPD Director, John Short, John. The General Manager of the Caneo Recreation and Park District, Jim Friedel. And the Chair of the Caneo Recreation and Park District, Joe Gibson, Joe. We also have with us this evening Nancy Dillon, former city clerk and city clerk emeritus of the City of Thousand Oaks, Nancy. Joining us this evening, Planning Commissioners, Mr. Al Adam, Al. And Darrell Reynolds, Darrell. Now, if I've missed anyone, I'll do a catch-up at the back, so if any of you see somebody that I've missed, please let me know. Al, I'm going to get to those generally in a minute. Thank you. Also in the audience from other organizations this evening, Greater Caneo Valley Chamber of Commerce, the Chairman of the Board, Pete Terpel, Pete, are you in there? That luncheon was probably too much for Pete today. He's probably resting. The Chairman of the Board of Directors, John La Roca, John, okay, he's chair-elect. And also the President and CEO of the Greater Chamber of Commerce, longtime friend Jill The Chair of the, excuse me, of the Alliance for the Arts, Tom Cohen, Tom, I know you're here. There you are. And I'd like to acknowledge any additional members of our city, boards, commissions, committees, and attendants tonight, would you please stand and be recognized? Thank you very much. One of the major strengths of this community since 1964 has been its boards, commissions, and panels, and participation by the residents. It's deeply appreciated, and it shows in the quality of life we all enjoy in this community. If I've missed someone inadvertently, I do apologize, but it happens. Okay, our special presentations, before I turn over the next part of our agenda to Mayor Pro Tim Fox, I do want to let you know that our annual council seat dedication presentations, normally held at the council reorganization meeting, will take place at the next council meeting on December 14th. Both seat dedication recipients were not available tonight to accept, so we reschedule the presentation until next week. At this time, I'll turn the meeting over to Mayor Pro Tim Fox, Andy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening to everyone. Tonight, we're doing several presentations to Mayor Gillette. Dennis, let me first start off with mentioning that we did receive a resolution from the Ventura County Board of Supervisors. They were not able to be here tonight to present it, but I just wanted to note that we did get a resolution from the county board as you make your way to the podium. Our first presentation this evening will be for newly-elected board member for the Caneo Recreation and Park District, representing former mayors of Thousand Oaks, Ed Jones. Ed, good evening.
Good evening, Andy. I didn't know we were going to be first. I was still writing lengthy notes. What do you call it? I'd like to have the other members who are here, these are former mayors, who obviously, this being an election year, they know a little bit about elections, and they'd like to say something for Dennis right now.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, Larry Horner, City of Thousand Oaks. Gives me great pleasure at this time to congratulate all of you on a job well done for the, over the past year. It's been a very difficult challenge, but you've done very well. And congratulations, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
And the rest of the council members, and best wishes for the year ahead. Thank you.
Bob Lewis, Thousand Oaks, first, obviously, congratulations to all of you, but since it's your night, Mr. Mayor, Dennis, I want to thank you from my family for everything you've done for this city. I think all of us who have had the privilege and honor of being mayors of this wonderful city know the tremendous time commitment and dedication it takes, and thank you again for your dedication to this community.
Thank you.
Frank Schello, City of Thousand Oaks. Dennis, I want to thank you and congratulate you on a landslide victory that you had.
Thank you.
And also to all of you council members, that, what, you know, looking at what you're doing from my perspective of some time ago being on the council, I know you guys are all doing a wonderful job, and when you think about the situation in governments throughout the country, and including our state government, I'm wondering if somehow we couldn't transport all of you to Sacramento and solve all the problems, because that's what you've done here in Thousand Oaks, and we're very proud of you.
Raymond Garcia, Thousand Oaks, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. It's amazing how time goes by, but as I look at each one of you, I know how much time and energy you put into your job, especially the mayor. It's a tremendous amount of work. I think sometimes people don't realize all the time, the time that they spend, not necessarily just at the council meetings, but other times of the work that they have to do, and the amount of reading they have to do, the amount of studies, all the different things you have to do, and we appreciate that as members of the City of Thousand Oaks, we appreciate all the things that you do, and we thank you, and we hope you, encourage you to continue to be faithful and to do your job, and especially the mayor, who has so much energy and time to spend helping people, we appreciate your efforts. God bless you. Thank you all.
Seeing Ray here reminds me that I was Vice Mayor when he was mayor, and just like this year, Halloween came on a Sunday, so Ray thought that was inappropriate for the children to go out on a Sunday, and so he declared unilaterally that Saturday would be trick-or-treat night, so they went out both nights. Anyway, we're probably the only city that ever had two Halloweens. Dennis, I'd like to salute you on, not only is the changing the guard, but it's an election year, and I'd like to recognize you and Claudia and Andy for their successful campaigns, and also in the park board, we had a rather close race where our two incumbents showing that people admire the park board, in my opinion. Sue Holt and Joe Gibson were re-elected, and I also like to mention the people that ran and didn't quite make it. Nobody knows like a candidate what it's like to wait, especially day after day, to see the final results, so I'd like to salute Al Adam in the city council race, and I'd like to salute Chuck Huffer and John Short in the park board race, because if you haven't been in the arena, as Teddy Roosevelt said, daring greatly, you don't know what it's like. It's hard on the family, isn't it? And it's a long haul. But Dennis, you had a good victory, and you had a great year as mayor, and very challenging times, so. This cup says, "Mayor Dennis Gillette, December 7th, 2010," I mean, from former mayors. Congratulations.
Well, thank you very much. This is kind of becoming a tradition, isn't it? Thank you all very, very much, and thank you for your long extended service.
When do we get together?
Yes. You had to say that, huh? How long do I have my cup?
His cups.
Thanks a lot.
Just as a observation, we just had the former mayor presentation, but I want the community to know that when their terms of elected office stopped, all of these gentlemen, and as well as other council members, continued their public service in a very, various capacities throughout the community, and many of them still continue to serve, and so to all of you, we give you our thanks for a job well done as you continue to serve our community. We very much appreciate it. Thanks very much. Representing our partners with the Caneo Recreation and Park District is Joe Gibson, Chair of the Park District, Joe. And Joe's going to be joined by fellow board member John Short and the General Manager Jim Friedel. Good evening, gentlemen. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fox, Joe Gibson, City of Thousand Oaks, neighborhood of Newbury Park. Congratulations to you, Andy, and Claudia, for your reelection, you, Mr. Mayor, as well, and to the council as a whole for all the work that you do. It's a pleasure from our agency in the long history that we have, and again, remind you we are a year older than the city, so, of working together, and it's something I think that is unique in this community. As I go to other communities up and down the state, and I talk about our park district or our city, and they say, "You actually get along?" I go, "Well, we get along. We do a lot of great stuff together." And I think it's epitomized in what Mayor Gillette has done, not only over the years, but even more recently. We often hear Dennis talk about his 47 years in the community, how he was here for a long time, but I think one of the things I like about Dennis more than anything else is not his history, but his vision. And I want to take you back here for a moment to a vision that this gentleman had when he was on the park board before I got there. In 1993, we had an opportunity of working with the city to acquire a piece of property in conjunction with the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy, the Mountains Conservation Authority, to acquire 326 acres out by Rancho Petrero. At that time, it was envisioned to be potentially playfields or a golf course or some other use, but through the years, the community spoke, and I think we all listened, what they wanted to do with that property. And I think an instrumental part of that was Dennis's vision early on, as a member of the park board, to get us to work together to acquire that 326 acres. Recently, we celebrated the annexation, both the city and the park district, of bringing that into our respective jurisdictions. And Dennis, what I would like to give to you tonight, and we didn't violate any ordinances of Costco doing this, the General Manager checked, he's authorized to collect this, is a piece, some dirt from Rancho Petrero.
I was wondering what that was. After seeing the General Manager with his horse today, I was wondering what was in there.
But I think, Dennis, this epitomizes, you know, this sample of soil is a great foundation to build upon, so, from us at the park district, thank you for your years of service, for your year of service this year as mayor, and we look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you very much, Joe. Ed?
It's a Kodak moment.
Am I in every shot tonight?
Our next presentation is from the Greater Caneo Valley Chamber of Commerce, and with us tonight is Board Chairman Pete Terpel, the CEO and President Jill Letter, and the Director of Governmental and Economic Affairs, Jan Smith.
And I'd like to go ahead and add on to that, Mayor Pro Tim, Andy Fox, our Chair-Elect Phil Kuntz is with us this evening as well.
Okay.
And, you know, we live in such an incredible city, and it's because of the volunteerism that we've had. I've been in this area since late '70s, and the, it's amazing to see how well the council works, as well with the, in conjunction with the Caneo Recreation and Park District, to create the environment. Even when all the little things come up, we seem to make things work out correctly. The most important thing is that how this city works with the business community. It makes me proud, it makes me know that you're thinking about us, it makes me understand that you exactly know how a city actually works, and without business, we don't. So, Mayor Gillette, I can't list all the things you have done in this community. I've known you for a very long time, and the, I'm proud to know you, but on behalf of, as Chairman of the Greater Caneo Valley Chamber of Commerce, the, with all the things that you've done, we've got a gift for you. I don't know what it is. I'm sure Terry can figure out what to do with it. You can put some dirt in this, because it works, but in honor of your outstanding leadership to the City of Thousand Oaks, from the Greater Caneo Valley Chamber of Commerce, thank you for your service. Thank you.
Representing the Alliance for the Arts is Chair of the Alliance, Tom Cohen.
I'm here as the Chair of the Alliance for the Arts. Couple board members are here this evening, Rick Lemo and Bob Lewis, and on behalf of the board, we want to thank you for the partnership that we have with the public-private experience in supporting the arts in the community and the facility that we're all standing in, as well as the beautiful 1,800-seat Cavalier Theater, and we've had a plaque with a photograph of the facility in your honor, and appreciation of the dedicated service that you provide to our community. We're just grateful for everything that you've done, and we continue to look forward to future endeavors with you.
The outgoing Director of the Caneo Recreation and Park District, John Short. And I think still President of...
Thousand Oaks Little League. 2006 World Series champion.
All right.
Who's County? Who's County?
Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. First, I want to thank all of you for your dedication and service to the citizens of our great community. May the holiday season bring you and your families much joy and happiness. Dennis, as we all know, is truly a remarkable man, and man like no other that I have ever met. He has dedicated over 50 years to serving others without reservation, hesitation, and never looking for recognition. He has served his country with honor and distinction as a United States Marine, and one of the original sheriffs of Thousand Oaks in 1963, where he again served with honor and distinction for over 25 years, retiring as Assistant Sheriff for Ventura County. He then continued to serve the community by working at California Lutheran University, retiring as Vice President of Administration Services and Treasurer after 12 years of service. Dennis has also served on the board, as a board member for Caneo Recreation and Park District for 10 years prior to his 12 years on city council. Recently, Dennis was honored for his service to others and his contributions to the community as, with an honorary doctor degree from California Lutheran University. I would also like to personally thank his wife, Terry, for her sacrifices with all the late nights and weekends that Dennis has been away from home, giving back to make the difference. This past year alone, as mayor, he attended over 200 events. Terry has been a catalyst for raising two outstanding daughters, and was a driving force in their Caneo Valley Family of the Year Award in 1983. And finally, to our three-time mayor, Dr. Dennis Gillette, thank you. Thank you for devoting 50 years of your life to serving others, setting out each day to make a difference in someone's lives. In 1987, the Caneo Valley Chamber of Commerce bestowed upon Dennis the Man of the Year Award. As I look around the room this evening, I would venture to guess that this is an inaccurate statement. Dennis, you are the man every year. Congratulations to four more years of public service to our great community, and a personal thanks to you, my friend, for all that you have done and will continue to do to make our city the best place to live.
Thank you, John. You know, John mentioned Cal Lutheran, and with us tonight is the President of Cal Lutheran University, Chris Kimball. Just give Chris some acknowledgement. Last and without question, certainly least, Rick Lemo.
I can't wait till next year. Mayor Gillette, you know, mayor is a term of respect, and so many of your friends will call you mayor from time to time. Some of them, when you have those rubber gloves, will call you doctor from time to time, but I'd rather tonight refer to you with a term of endearment, so I mean no disrespect by not calling you mayor, but I'm going to call you what a lot of your friends call you, which is Denny. And we call upon you a lot, need a favor, need advice. You're truly a part of history here in Thousand Oaks, and I mean that very respectfully, even though I've lived through many of your speeches. I think it's something like 212 years you've been here, and you've retired from almost every position. But what we really respect is your dedication, your honesty, your candor, and most importantly, your courage. It's not easy to be on city council and have, at some point in time, 99% of everybody telling you, "You've made the wrong decision," but you stay focused, and you stay, and you realize what the citizens want and want you to work towards, and above all else, especially this year during the election, you took the high road and you stayed truthful, and at no point did you lose your focus. A lot of people, whether it be during a campaign or just in life in general, want to rewrite history, but I hope you feel as proud as we all do that you make history and you live history, and for that, we thank you very much. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Association, and I know that there are many things in your life that you cherish and you respect, one of which is our American flag and what it means to salute it, and so tonight, we've put together an award where, quite frankly, we say, "We salute you, Mayor Dennis Gillette, for your unwavering dedication to the citizens and businesses of Thousand Oaks. Job well done."
Representing the City of Thousand Oaks, city employees, the leader and General Manager, CEO, City Manager Scott Mittig.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm, a few words to say on behalf of the employees and on behalf of the executive team, who are your department heads. We would like to say thank you for your leadership and your vision and your support and your patience. I used to say on behalf of the 650 employees, but now I have to say on behalf of the 575. But 2010 was a very challenging year for the community and for the organization, for the mayor, and for council, and I'd like to remind the council and the public that being mayor of any city is challenging. When you're dealing with economic stress, such as we faced last year and the several years before that, it becomes especially challenging. Several times, a mayor had pointed out to me or asked the question, "Why am I doing this?" And I had to keep reminding him of the value of public service, but when you're mayor, it has a tremendous impact, not just on your role as mayor, but also on your family life, your personal life, your marriage, your being able to spend time with your family. You said today that you attended 220-some-odd events this year. That's 220 times you weren't with your family, and as mayor, you're always on call, and you have to make tough choices, and you have to provide leadership. So, Dennis, you were always focused, it was clear, we knew what your direction was, and you were very relentless at times in a very positive way, and today, the organization, here we are a year later, is that much more stable and that much better off because of your leadership. The city's well positioned to make the transition to next year, and tonight, we participate in one of the fundamental aspects of democracy in America, the transition of power from one council to another, from one mayor to another. So, on behalf of the executive team, we have a little memento of our appreciation for your leadership. Are you leaving it?
There is one more presentation while Mr. Gillette returns to his seat.
I'm not going to go into it, but Thousand Oaks has received several hundreds of thousands of dollars for construction projects. Right now, we're working on the 23 freeway interchange, and Dennis is at the forefront of that. So Dennis, first and foremost, thank her for your energy, your willingness to do what others just simply won't do, and we thank you for that. Second, I was struck by your passion this year. It has been called out a number of times that sometimes you get a little fired up at the Council meetings. And I can just share with you, that's because this man has lived in this community since 1963, which leads me to the third area. You are the historian of the City Council. In order to know where you're going, it's important to know where you've been. And Dennis has been the historian for our community. He provides balance, he provides perspective, he provides context. And I would say that the decisions that are made from the City Council in part are due to Dennis's knowledge and his history of this community. So Dennis, certainly on a personal note, I have known you since my very first year running for office. It is a little forgotten fact that my very first campaign, my first endorsement, my first campaign picture was with then-former Police Chief Dennis Gillette. So Dennis and I have shared a good professional and personal friendship for many years. It is a pleasure to work with him again for another four years in the City Council, and I congratulate you on an outstanding year as Mayor. Thanks very much. We'll now have remarks from the Council, and I'll just start working from my left and my right, and we'll start with Councilmember Bill Delapena.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. As Mr. Fox already stated rather elegantly, there is absolutely no doubt that you have served our community with great passion and with great dedication. I have said that before, and I don't think that that will ever change. I do appreciate, and the community appreciates, the effort, the time, and the energy that you have put into serving everyone here in Thousand Oaks. It is quite a few years that you have done this, and the fact that it does take away from family is a stated fact or knowledge. And I want you to know that I'm sure everybody, whether they are of the same political opinion or philosophy or not, appreciates the fact that you have done all that you have done for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Claire. Councilmember Irwin.
Thank you. Mayor Dennis Gillette, I truly think that, you know, we're visible on Tuesday evenings, but the most important job of, the most important part of being a Councilmember or being the Mayor is actually what happens, other than Tuesday evening, inside of our community, our engagement in our community and our engagement outside of our community for the benefit of our residents. The list of your involvements this year is very, very long, your membership on boards, service clubs, VCREA, VCTC, the list goes on and on. I should say, the head of VCTC this year, the Chair of the League of California Cities' Public Safety Committee, the Chair of the National Public Safety Committees, these things are very, very important to us, and they made a big difference in our community this year. You really went above and beyond, and so I want to thank you for myself and on behalf of all the residents on your outstanding year. And we look forward to, I look forward to four more years of serving with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Irwin. Councilmember Glancy.
Thank you very much. Denny, it's been a rather tremendous year, I think. I want to thank you for the leadership that you always display, your wisdom, as Andy pointed out, your absolutely limitless knowledge of the history of our area, which is so valuable to us. We say, "How did we ever get to this? What ever happened? What preceded us?" And you're there to tell us what preceded us, and it's a tremendous asset to the City Council. Your year as Mayor, by all measures, has to be claimed to be a huge success. To cite just a couple of things, though, one is that we had a balanced budget in extremely difficult times, and it was through the exercise of this unbelievable fiscal responsibility and constraints and restraints. So I thank you very much for that. I thank you for your friendship. You know, we've known each other for 25 years or so. It's been a long time, and you've been a great friend, and I really appreciate that. As Jackie pointed out, I think one of the truly remarkable things is the way you immerse yourself into the community even more so than what you have as a CLU person, or as a sheriff, or as a wreck-in-park guy. You're always in the community, but when you become Mayor, you are absolutely full-time. You know, you look at the Council calendar, and the most cynical has to be pretty amazed at how much you deny your family to do the things that you consider to be the responsibility of the community. And it was a great year. Thank you very, very much.
I'm going to turn the meeting back over to Mayor Gillette now to get the report from the City Clerk on our election results. Scott, Amy, did you have some comments? I can't believe you don't have something to say.
I think I get the last comment.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead, Amy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the last time, at least for this year. I just wanted to also join in Scott's words and all of the Councilmembers. It's been a pleasure serving with you this year, having you as Mayor, and your passion just exceeds everyone's, and all the work we did on the arts report was just phenomenal. I truly, truly appreciate and admire what you do for this community and what you've taught me about this community and its values. So thank you.
All right. Now, we'll turn it over to the Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you all very, very much. I'm going to begin by thanking the community for once again entrusting me to serve on the City Council. It was a close race. I'm proud of the positive campaign that I ran. It was a true honor to once again serve as Mayor in 2010. I'd like to extend a sincere thanks to my Council colleagues for giving me this opportunity to lead. I want to extend a special thank you to my amazing family. My wife, Terry, has been my partner for over four decades, 42-plus years as my best friend. She's been an invaluable support to me throughout my time on the City Council and especially during this year as Mayor. And the extension of that is in two fantastic daughters, whom I'm extremely proud of, and now the legacy continues with Ava Grace, who's two and a half years old and going This is not a job I take lightly. It's the Mayor's responsibility to set the pace, to advocate the city's interests with regional and national officials, as well as to represent the City Council at community functions, something that I did, according to the statistics from the office, over 225 times, from Eagle Scout courts, 100th birthdays. It's exhausting and extremely rewarding. This has been a year unlike any in my 47-year tenure in local government, a year marked by continued financial strife, political turmoil at all levels, and perhaps most noteworthy, corruption in two California cities. In Thousand Oaks, we have continued to operate with the utmost transparency through our open meetings, publicly-reported salaries, and solid management of our quarter-billion-dollar annual budget. This Council recognizes that Thousand Oaks taxpayers are all equal shareholders. Looking back on the high points of this year, I'm proud of our many accomplishments, and I'm grateful for the remarkable staff that's made it work. Our employees have been a true partner through difficult decision-making and budget adjustments. In light of all the unknowns, they have faithfully continued to provide first-rate services and programs during a very difficult year. I'd like the audience to meet every one of our outstanding employees, but since that isn't possible, we'd like to have you meet four of them on a short video, if you would, please.
Hi, my name is Connie Hickman, and I'm the Human Resources Director for the City of Thousand Oaks. Our employees work very hard to provide the highest level of service to the community. Today, I'm very honored to introduce you to four members of our employee family.
Hi, I'm Melissa Hurtado. I'm the Revenue Assistant in the Finance Department. I've been with the city for about six and a half years. I came to the city with the idea of transferring to the Accounting Division once I obtained my accounting degree. I did obtain my accounting degree, and for some reason, I decided to stay in public services. I find that I love working with the citizens of Thousand Oaks. Everybody is just so wonderful, and I love to help people.
City of Thousand Oaks, customer service, how may I help you?
Sure, I can certainly assist you with that. What type of business were you looking to open? Here in the Public Services Division, we have a variety of services that we offer. We have a housing assistance program for seniors, which offers a stipend check to seniors who meet the income qualifications. There's also a dial-to-arrive program, which is a taxi service for our seniors. We do utility billing here. There's parking citation payments and inquiries that I handle. My main area of expertise is the business licensing, so that's where most of my time goes, and I like to help customers who come in here and they need to get a business license, and they're trying to open a business and succeed. But my main focus is to make sure that all businesses are compliant and registered with the City of Thousand Oaks.
All right. Looks like you're opening up a computer consulting business?
Yeah, I am. I'm up here on the Boulevard.
Okay, perfect. Let me go ahead and get this all set up on the computer. I'll be right back with you.
Thank you.
A lot of times when people come into my department, I'm one of the first people that they see, and it's very important to me to make sure that they feel special. I really try to go above and beyond for the citizens that come into the office. I often help business owners who have no idea of what they're doing. They have a great idea, but they just don't know how to get started. For example, yesterday, I had a gentleman come in, and he had this great idea for a business opportunity. He really didn't know where to go. So I kind of went above and beyond my normal call of duty, and I helped search online. I kind of had an idea of what agencies he needed to contact, but I really wasn't sure myself. So I went on there, was able to get him phone numbers, websites. I really got him going, and he walked out of the office. He felt really good, really excited, and it just made me feel really happy.
Hi, my name is Santos Marcus, and I'm the Laboratory Supervisor at the Hill Canyon Waste Water Treatment Plant. Graduated in 1990 from the University of California in Santa Barbara with the Biological Sciences Degree. Been with the city for 16 great years and happy to be here. I have several different responsibilities with the City of Thousand Oaks. Part of them are dealing with regulatory agencies, and those vary from the Ventura County Environmental Health Department, Ventura County Air Force Control District, all the way to the State Water Quality Resources Control Board. But my main focus and my main enjoyment with my job is overseeing the laboratory here at Hill Canyon. The results that we achieve in the laboratory help us act as the last line of defense for any environmental issues that we may have here. We can let time operation staff know that, hey, we need to make some adjustments with the process at the time, so that we're not in, we don't run the risk of running in violation of our permit. The main objectives at the city here are twofold. We want to protect the city, and we want to protect the environment. And that's what makes my job most enjoyable to me. When I do my job properly, the City of Thousand Oaks residents benefit from a cleaner environment, lower sewer rates, and a great environment to live in.
My name is Charlotte Burrows, and I'm a librarian here at the City of Thousand Oaks Library, working with childrens and young adults. Some of my responsibilities include doing storytime. That's one of my favorite things at the library. I also provide service at the children's help desk and also at the information desk. I select materials for the library, arrange tours for groups coming in, and I also work with teens who volunteer with us during the summer and throughout the year. Recently, I had a boy, and it's always hard to get boys to be, to connect them with the books that maybe they will want to read. I had a boy who was probably middle-school age that said the library didn't have anything that he would want to read. We found him a great series, and it got him hooked. And he came back, actually, his mother came back and thanked me for getting him hooked on a series, and it's turning him into reading the next book in the series, the next book, and hopefully, he'll come back and want to find some other services or other materials we have here in the library. I felt so fulfilled as a librarian, and to me, providing that service is so rewarding and so fulfilling.
Hi, my name's Billy Hutton. I'm a Senior Deputy with the Ventura County Sheriff's Department. I've been employed as a deputy for approximately 13 years. I've been with the Bike Patrol for the last year and a half. Some of my other assignments include patrol, custody environment, along with court services and detectives, and now I'm here on the Thousand Oaks Bike Patrol Team. I supervise a full-time Bike Patrol Team. It's a four-member team here in the City of Thousand Oaks. We're the only full-time team here in the county of Ventura. We start out our day, and we get out on the streets on our bicycle. We're the kind of the eye in the sky on bikes, and we go out there and we patrol for quality-of-life issues concerning public urination, drinking, vending violations, any type of gambling, along with drug-related offenses. On the flip side, we go ahead and we deal with business owners also and try to promote a safe place to live and work, and we talk to them, see if they have any concerns within the community, and we go ahead and answer or take care of any issues that they may have on a daily basis. Makes me feel good coming to work every single day and putting on my uniform, knowing that I can make a difference out in the community. Going out there and keeping the public concern in mind when I'm going out there and exercising my daily duties makes me feel good as a person, as the same as a law enforcement officer here in the City of Thousand Oaks. I believe by us going to work and consistently doing a good job out here and removing crime from the streets and going out and making public contacts with people, knowing the community knows that we're out here enforcing laws and regulations, I believe that the community looks at it, that we're out here, making it a safer place for them to live, safer place for them to shop, and a safe place for them to raise their families here in the City of Thousand Oaks.
Watching that video, I'm again struck with the thought, it's always...
My name is Charlotte Burrows, and I'm a librarian here at the City of Thousand Oaks Library, working with children's and young adults. Some of my responsibilities include doing storytime. That's one of my favorite things at the library. I also provide service at the Children's Help Desk and also at the Information Desk. I select materials for the library, arrange tours for groups coming in, and I also work with teens who volunteer with us during the summer and throughout the year. Recently, I had a boy, and it's always hard to get boys to be, to connect them with the books that maybe they will want to read. I had a boy who was probably middle school age that said the library didn't have anything that he would want to read. We found him a great series, and it got him hooked, and he came back, actually, his mother came back and thanked me for getting him hooked on a series, and it's turning him into reading the next book in the series, the next book, and hopefully he'll come back and want to find some other services or other materials we have here in the library. I felt so fulfilled as a librarian, and to me, providing that service is so rewarding
Hi, my name's Billy Hutton. I'm a Senior Deputy with the Ventura County Sheriff's Department. I've been employed as a deputy for approximately 13 years. I've been with the Bike Patrol for the last year and a half. Some of my other assignments include patrol, custody environment, along with court services and detectives, and now I'm here on the Thousand Oaks Bike Patrol Team. I supervise a full-time Bike Patrol Team. It's a four-member team here in the City of Thousand Oaks. We're the only full-time team here in the county of Ventura. We start out our day, and we get out on the streets on our bicycle. We're the kind of the eye in the sky on bikes, and we go out there and we patrol for quality-of-life issues concerning public urination, drinking, vending violations, any type of gambling, along with drug-related offenses. On the flip side, we go ahead and we deal with business owners also and try to promote a safe place to live and work, and we talk to them, see if they have any concerns within the community, and we go ahead and answer or take care of any issues that they may have on a daily basis. Makes me feel good coming to work every single day and putting on my uniform, knowing that I can make a difference out in the community. Going out there and keeping the public concern in mind when I'm going out there and exercising my daily duties makes me feel good as a person and as, same as a law enforcement officer here in the City of Thousand Oaks. I believe by us going to work and consistently doing a good job out here and removing crime from the streets and going out and making public contacts with people, knowing the community knows that we're out here enforcing laws and regulations, I believe that the community looks at it, that we're out here making it a safer place for them to live, safer place for them to shop, and a safe place for them to raise their families here
Watching that video, I'm again struck with the thought, it's always about the people. The strength of this city lies with its 130,000 residents, who insist on a certain type of government, and that government are the people of this municipality. It's always about the people. Very, very appreciative of all of them. I thank all of our employees on behalf of the residents and the city council. As my closing thoughts, our year would not be complete without expressing appreciation to our outstanding community partners. You are the cornerstone of many significant achievements in the Canoa Valley. You are the tremendous positive force, and your accomplishments help make Thousand Oaks the wonderful place that it is. We thank you all for your efforts. One significant illustration of true community partnership occurred with the 2010 Amgen Tour of California. As most of you know, in May of this year, Thousand Oaks, Agora Hills, and Westlake Village joined together to host the finale of the nation's largest professional cycling event. This event put our communities on the world map as destination cities and provided a boost to our local economies. This year, Thousand Oaks will again be hosting this spectacular event on May 22, 2011. As friends, neighbors, community leaders, and parents, we agree on so much. I ask you all to come together to get involved and speak up for good government and rational decision-making. Thousand Oaks today is the result of 46 years of careful planning and thoughtful decision-making. A solid foundation has been laid by incredibly visionary leaders. Throughout 2010, tremendous work has been done by city council and staff to implement many exciting programs and projects. The City of Thousand Oaks has earned its reputation as Ventura County's premier city. Everybody in this room should be proud of that fact. Our community is well-positioned to achieve even more greatness over the next 46 years. I thank you all very much. At this time, we'll move to Item 6 on the agenda to ask the city clerk to call public comments.
This is the time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. Speakers are requested to state their name and city of residence for the record. Six people have presented cards, and pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you very much. Our first speaker, Suzanne Duckett. Ms. Duckett, followed by Jim Seardon, followed by Hannah Hong.
Good evening, Suzanne Duckett, and I'm not really quite sure what city I should state as mine. I hate to rain on the parade, but that is what this country stands for when government goes awry, and I just could not sit up there and hold my tongue. Claudia has been overlooked by you people sitting up here for her rightful place as mayor. That is shameful, and all of you are responsible, and I hold you responsible. It's terrible. It's terrible to have to come here when government goes awry and point out shameful behavior. With that said, the reason I can't, so I want to thank Claudia, and I also want to thank your appointment of Al Adam for your planning commissioner, so thank you very much, Claudia. We, I, I and my family appreciate you, and you're our honorary mayor. Thank you. The reason I came tonight was to remind people out there, the public, that next, the next meeting, December the 14th, will be the discussion and the decision on that auto mall TV billboard Taste or no taste, class or no class, those are the questions. And will the properties of Westlake, Lake Sherwood, North Ranch, and Lang Ranch be downgraded? Will their property values be downgraded from that sign? That TV advertising billboard? We're going to find out next week what those people think and what they're made of. I'm asking you to come here to the meeting next week and make a statement card. I know it's hard to get up here and do public speaking for a lot of people. It's still hard for me to stand up here, but I come because I think it's an important, it is very important to me to be here when issues are important for the whole public at large. Anyway, I'm waiting to see next week. I hope I can depend on those people to be here.
Jim Seardon, Jim, good evening.
How are you? Council members, city staff, my name is Jim Seardon. I'm Chair of the Council on Aging. And to Mayor Gillette, on behalf of the commission, we would like to offer you our very special thanks and heartfelt gratitude for the time, the attention, and the support that you've given to the seniors in our community. And a special thank you for the number of times you participated in our, our many COA functions. Believe me when I tell you, your presence at these meetings added credibility to our, to our words and to our efforts. We also want to thank the entire city council for the support, their continuing support of the Council on Aging Senior Adult Master Plan and its implementation phases. We've climbed a lot of mountains in the last couple of years. We've set some pretty high standards for what we're trying to accomplish, but as the poet said, "We've miles to go before we sleep." We have a lot of work to do, and we're looking forward to working with each and every one of you in the coming year. So thank you, Mayor Gillette. I would like if you, if I could, to have the Council on Aging members who are with us tonight stand and give you the applause that you deserve. Could we do that, guys? Thank you. And I would like to ask, and on behalf of the commission, we want to wish each and every one of you and your families a safe and happy holidays. Thank you again.
Hannah Hong from the Youth Commission, followed by Phyllis Piano.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, city manager, and staff. My name is Hannah Hong, and I am Chair of the Thousand Oaks Youth Commission. On behalf of my fellow commissioners and the youth that benefit from our leadership, we would like to thank Mayor Gillette for your participation in our many events this year, and the entire council for your continued support for the youth in our community. Our efforts to address the needs of the youth, or the young adults of Thousand Oaks would not be possible without your support. Our commission would not exist without your greater vision and create a community that tends to the needs of every age group. And the fact that we are able to continue our mission to serve the youth in our community speaks volumes to the type of community this city strives to maintain. We are especially grateful for the funding and your leadership support for the Youth Leadership Summit and its implementation. This year, we are striving to use the funds allocated to us as efficiently as possible in implementing key supplement goals. We look forward to working with all of you, and we wish you and your families a wonderful holiday season and a happy new year. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. I am Phyllis Piano from Amgen, and I am delighted to be here, Mayor Gillette. I would like to address your service, but beyond just this year, but congratulations for an outstanding year. You mentioned the Amgen Tour of California, and I'm personally responsible with my team for the partnership with AEG on that, and thank you so much for that partnership. We look forward to a very successful 2011. I don't know how much more proud we could all be to see Thousand Oaks represented around the world, and it was delightful, and thank you for your service, Mayor. Thank you to the council. Thank you distinguished guests. I need to mention one thing, because Amgen this year, I don't know if people realize it, we celebrated our 30th year, actually, in April of this year. And Mayor, you've been around for every year of that, and you've given us support in many, many ways, and that's why I wanted to be here on behalf of thousands of Amgen people, my colleague Kristen Davis, who is here tonight, to thank you and the council for everything you do to make this just one of the premier communities. I hope that you feel as proud of Amgen as we are as proud to call Thousand Oaks our home, and thank you for your dedicated service.
John Fonti, followed by Wanda Callan.
Good evening, John Fonti, Thousand Oaks. I'm going to repeat a few things that I said about three weeks ago when I was last here at the council meeting, and I think it's actually more appropriate for tonight. And hopefully, I won't be raining on the parade tonight. But start off, without good reporting by our local newspapers, our residents remain in the dark about important matters, and that's too bad because there's a lot going on that residents really would be interested in. First thing I'd like to comment on is the recent election, which returns all the incumbents tonight, and that's over the unprecedented 10 challengers. This is the first time in years, maybe ever, that more people voted for challengers than the incumbents, and that speaks volumes, that voters aren't happy with you. Claudia Bill de la Peña was the biggest vote getter by far, but even though Claudia was an incumbent, she ran as a challenger. For the past eight years, she's regularly challenged the status quo, the four-to-one supermajority. On controversial matters, she's the one on the typical four-to-one vote. If the votes for Claudia were added to the challenger votes, the results are just startling. Seventy percent of those, of the votes cast did not go to Mr. Gillette or Mr. Fox. That represents a 70% dissatisfaction. So even though council may be back to the same four-to-one supermajority until the next election, I just hope you realize that you have no mandate from the voting public. As a matter of fact, the current council supermajority was basically repudiated on November 2nd. We would expect that elected officials would keep that in mind when deciding controversial issues, but I'm afraid it's business as usual here in council chambers again, and here's a prime example. Next week, you will be considering approval of ridiculous and monstrous TV screen sign in front of the auto mall on the 101 freeway. It's going to be 35 feet tall, which is the equivalent to a three-story building. The proposed sign is against longstanding municipal sign policy and would forever change the looks of Thousand Oaks. This sign should never be considered in the first place, but even if one were to overlook that very significant point, one would hope that the council would attempt to get public buy-in of the sign by putting up a realistic mock sign for a month or two and solicit public feedback. But we all know that you won't do that because the public would repudiate the sign like they reputed you on November 2nd. So in closing, I hope that the public comes in droves to next week's council meeting and that they tell you to drop the sign, drop the special treatment to the auto mall, redevelopment dollars are to fix blight, not to create blight, and in this case, you're going to be creating sign blight on a scenic highway. Thank you.
Thank you, and our final speaker, Wanda Callan.
Good evening, council members. I've been a resident of Thousand Oaks for 43 years, so I've watched it grow considerably, and I would like to say that unfortunately, I am not going to be here next week, but I am here to voice my opinion. I've only been here a few times during all those many, many years, and I, as well as my five family members, are opposed to the new sign going up. We were appalled to see the framework up there this past week, and I'm just here to voice my opinion. I think for the most part, everyone is doing their best, and Claudia, you have all of our appreciation for everything that you do and for what you stand for, and I think you have a wonderful family. And that's all I had to say, other than the fact that if that sign causes more people to buy cars, which is a good source of revenue for Thousand Oaks, I know, then maybe all the real estate offices and everybody else will want bigger signs, as they have had in the past also. But that has been gone by the wayside again. So please leave it as is, well enough is alone, and I know you've heard this statement a million times, we do not want to be a San Fernando Valley. Thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you. That concludes the public comments section. We'll move to Item 7, Department Reports. City Clerk, Mrs. Lawrence.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. We have before you a resolution tonight declaring the results of the general municipal election held on November 2nd, 2010. The county clerk has certified the canvas of the votes cast for three offices of members of the city council for the City of Thousand Oaks. It is recommended that city council adopt the resolution certifying the election of Claudia Bill de la Peña, Andy Fox, and Dennis C. Gillette for the term of four years. It's also recommended that council authorize the expenditure of an amount not to exceed $45,000 for costs associated with the election, which includes the contract with the County of Ventura for election services. Thank you.
Thank you. Move to the item to the council, pleasure of the council. Dr. Glancy.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. It's my pleasure to move Staff Recommendation Points 1 and 2 to adopt the resolution and authorize the expenditure of the amount not to exceed $45,000.
Thank you very much. Comments to the motion? There being none, please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. We'll move to Item 8, City Clerk to administer the oath to re-elected council members. City Clerk, please administer the oath of office to our re-elected council members. Mrs. Lawrence.
If I could have Mayor Gillette, Mayor Proton Fox, and Council Member Bill de la Peña join me at the podium. If you could please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name, do solemnly swear affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that you take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter. Very good, thank you. If I can just have you sign your oaths. If I can just have you sign your oaths.
At this time, we'll move to item nine, council reorganization. Now is the time for the 2010 council reorganization. I have no speakers. The clerk have any, we have no speaker cards. Will the, will the city clerk please open the nominations?
Nominations are now in order and open for the office of mayor for the city of Thousand Oaks.
Mrs. Bildelepenya.
I would like to nominate Mr. Andrew Fox.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? There being no further nominations for mayor, nominations are declared closed.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Nominations are now in order to open for the office of, let's see, let me get down. There being no further nominations for mayor. Councilmember Andy Fox has been nominated to serve as the mayor of the city of Thousand Oaks until December 2011. Thank you all very much. The motion carries. New mayor, take the gavel, please.
I think Mr. Gillette was carrying the, waiting for the election results a little far this time this evening. All right. Nominations are now open for the position of mayor pro tem. Councilmember Glancy.
Thank you. Let me tell you, it's a pleasure to address you as Mr. Mayor. It's my pleasure to nominate Councilwoman Jackie Irwin for mayor pro tem.
Councilmember Jackie Irwin has been placed in nomination for mayor pro tem. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, nominations are closed, and by acclamation, councilmember Jackie Irwin is elected mayor pro tem. Congratulations, Jackie. We've had a lot of comments tonight, and so I simply first want to thank the council for this opportunity to serve for what we now, my fourth term as mayor. It's always a pleasure and an honor to serve the city in capacity for what Mr. Mitnick says is the premier city of the state of California, and so it's an honor to do that. I will pledge to you only that I will do my very best, run the meetings in an even-handed way. The public is always welcome to come here to the city council meeting. I think the council and the community have demonstrated the last several years a tone of civility and respect for city council, for the city chambers, and I would expect that that civility, that balance, that respect for our community would continue through the next year. I want to take the opportunity to thank my family. It is a laborious campaign, seems a little anticlimactic, then in 30 seconds after several months of work, that you're sworn into office and you just take your seat. But it truly is a labor of love, but it is time away from your family, and there is that sacrifice there. Also want to thank my campaign team. This year, I was blessed with a new team for folks that have not been involved with campaigns, and many, many people were involved, but one person does not win a campaign, and so my true thanks to all of you for your help. I've said it many times, candidates lose elections, but the campaign team wins elections. And so I want to thank you guys for the great work that you did. Thanks very much. Finally, I want to thank the community. I ran for my fifth term, and it's really, truly a pleasure to serve on the city council. We have a great community. We have our challenges, we have our issues, but we are very fortunate to have great city staff, people that care about this community. We have thousands of volunteers in this community, from Los Rovels Hospital to here at the Civic Arts Plaza, to the people that coach our football teams and our baseball teams and work in various civic affairs. It all comes together to make a community. I'm very, very proud to be part of it. I think the mayor outlined, really going forward this evening, great work that we have ahead of us. We have a number of issues, we have a number of difficult decisions that we'll be making in the area of land use. Some have been discussed here tonight. We have ongoing budget challenges within our community. We have a number of things that we need to be looking at. We were recently ranked number three in the United States for one of the safest cities in the United States. We're going to work very hard to maintain that position. We have an ongoing challenge to locate a fire station in the city of Westlake. We're looking forward to work with our partners in the county to make that a reality this year, or at least get the idea of a fire station settled with respect to the area of Westlake. We have a number of issues, but we will meet them with, with energy, with passion, with respect for our community, and I just want to thank all of you on behalf of the city for your efforts, and I look forward to a successful year as mayor. Thanks very much.
I think we've all heard enough talking today, so I'll make this very quick. I certainly appreciate the honor to be picked as mayor pro tem. We've had a very difficult year this year, and I certainly hope that we can all start to focus on the positive as, as we move forward into the next year. This is a great city, and I am so proud to be involved here. Thank you.
Dr. Glancy, did you have some more comments?
You know, just real quickly, Mr. Mayor, I, I want to congratulate you for being the mayor for this year. You bring and have brought all these years a great deal of experience, a great deal of knowledge, and your ability to work through extremely sticky issues successfully is absolutely amazing and is a great asset to all of us. I thank you for your, your past service, and I, I thank you in advance for your future service in these arenas, so thanks for being here.
Thank you, Tom. Claudia?
Andy, congratulations on being mayor, I don't know, fourth or fifth time? I lost count. I, I know you will do a capable job as you have been doing for the last 16 years, and I do, would like to, I want to state that I'm very proud of the campaign that I have run. I'm very proud of the, of my running mate, Al Adam, who has done phenomenally well, and the voters who have put trust and confidence in me and elected me by a wide margin, which is something I did not expect. It was a pleasant surprise, and it was a wonderful surprise. And it shows though, however, that no matter how many votes you receive, when there is a supermajority, if we have, as we have tonight, nothing, nothing will change. One way for the council supermajority to have extended an olive branch would have to offer the 20,000-plus voters to have a representative and that will become mayor or mayor pro tem. That has not happened, and while the title is not what really matters, it is really the voters of the, of Thousand Oaks who have shown confidence in a council member and are now receiving a slap in the face. This is the third time I've been passed over. I have remained quiet over the last few years, but I will not do so tonight. I hope that things will change, but I doubt very much, and it is unfortunate. So I wish everyone else quite good luck, and I'm sure you will work well together. But I want the residents of Thousand Oaks to know that things are happening as usual as they have in the past, and that's not necessarily a good thing. I'm looking for progress, and I'm not seeing it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and again, congratulations, Mr. Fox. We look forward to another great year. We've got a lot of, lot of work ahead of us, and I feel privileged to have the opportunity to serve the residents of this community one more time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gillette. That brings us to the close of tonight's agenda. Again, I want to thank everybody from the community. We went through yet another election cycle, and the voters have spoken, and now it's time to get to work and do the business of the people. So I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight, and we will adjourn to our next regular scheduled council meeting for December 14th at 6:00 PM. Have a good evening. [applause]